She did send a message saying she won't be able to make it tonight. Mayor Protem. I'm gonna get it right. You good? I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. I am Yumika Robinson, Mayor of Lake City, South Carolina. Thank you for coming tonight. I am calling this meeting to order, our regular city council meeting, Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. Our invocation will be led by Councilwoman Wilhelmina Scott tonight, and our pledge will be led by Councilwoman Crosby. Please stand.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for this community, for the one that gathered today with the concern of the city. We pray to heaven, Father, that you would bless each and every one that here. Bless this community, Lord. Lord, spare us, Lord, for all harm and dangers, Lord. Let nothing come upon us tonight. We pray to heaven, Father, we come with open mind and open heart with the concern of this community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I do want to remind everyone, can we please silent or turn off their phones at this moment? Please silence or turn off your phones. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council members?
Mayor Yumika Robinson.
Present.
Mayor Protem DeWoneka Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Melissa Askin.
Present.
Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Fleming-Crosby.
Present.
Councilmember Nicole Singletary. Councilmember Jason Brown. Mayor, I do find that to be a quorum present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to propose an amendment. I move to add a presentation led by Ms. Serena Brown on autism awareness tonight. So I make a motion to amend the agenda.
Where does she come in on the agenda?
Presentations. Do I get a second?
Except the minutes, another minute, except the agenda as printed with addition with Serena added to for autism children awareness.
Just your second to the motion that was made, right?
Right.
Okay. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, council? All of those in favor of amending the agenda, show of hands, please. Thank you. The amendment carries. Now may I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, we have a platform for our young people addressing the mayor and council. Tonight, we have Dr. Ronnie McNear School of Digital Communication and Leadership, 8th grade social studies class. Can we give them a round of applause as they come up to the podium? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I do apologize, I didn't do approval of the minutes. I guess I was excited to hear them tonight. So let's go back. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Approval of the minutes from the mayor and council, regular city council meeting on March 11th, 2025, mayor and council special call meeting on March 25th, 2025, and mayor and council special call meeting on April 1st, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, any discussion? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Now, we were here from the Dr. Ronnie McNear School of Digital Communication and Leadership, 8th grade social studies class. Let's give them a round of applause.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My purpose for speaking with you tonight is to address my concerns that there is not enough recreational opportunities for young people in Lake City. As one of the teens in this city and someone having little siblings, I like to get out the house and have fun. For people my age, it sometimes feel like there isn't really anything to do in our city besides looking at art or going to the park. To improve young people's attitude, I think the city council should set up a day, different age groups of children, and should get things we want to see in our city for different recreational opportunities and community events. For instance, on the Lake City website, things to do, much of the activities are in the art, mural, public art category. Also, the website shows outdoor activities people may drive to, like Lynch's River or Moore Botanical Gardens, but nothing specific for the kids to do in public spaces. This could be things like going to the fair, playing games, and having scavenger hunt. In Florence, South Carolina, they have a community center where young people can get together for different events. In Columbia, South Carolina, they have days where they can go to a splash pad. The kids and teens who love both of these ideas and others like them. Consulting us with activities we would like to see and share on the website could be one way to improve people's attitude. Some people may think adults are the ones that matter because they are the ones able to spend money and support the local economy. This may be true, but young people may want to leave the city when they are grown and not recommend it to anyone. Young people are the future after all. For all these reasons, creating opportunities for youth to consult you for improved recreational opportunities is an important step for the betterment of our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Sematik. Tonight, I would like to address my concerns surrounding the lack of animal shelters and animal programs in Lake City. As a middle schooler who loves animals, I believe that addressing this issue is about quality of life for both residents and animals. Currently, the shortage of available shelter lead to an increase in stray animals, which can pose a risk to residents and these are people moving to our area. The presence of abandoned or stray animals can cause safety hazards. For instance, aggressive dogs or animals roaming loose can control a traffic violation or accident accidentally happening and general uneasiness among residents. According to Dog Bites Statistics and State Facility Data from 2005 and 2020, 16 people died because of stray animal in South Carolina. As a result, across the state, there is a 12% chance of getting attacked by a stray dog and a 0.0001% chance of dying. Even though this chance is that occur is low, it can still happen and concern significant problems, especially during the time of the year. As we know, animals are more active during winter months, I mean warmer months in the year and are most likely to be seen outside. Yet, during the cold weather, stray animals are hiding in places like abandoned buildings, under porches, or in cars to stay warm. During my meeting with the mayor two weeks ago, I learned that the city actually does have a police officer that traps these animals and take them to a shelter, but not in Lake City. This means the officer or concerned citizens like me, who would like to volunteer with these animals, have to drive from here to Florence County Animal Shelter, and that takes up to half an hour. While some may argue that it is not the city's responsibility to build animal shelters and that doing so would impose an additional financial burden, I believe that providing these rescues resources is essential for developing a safe and caring community, helping our city grow. Establishing animal shelters not only help manage the animal population, but also serve as a hub for responsible pet owners offering volunteers opportunity and educational about animal safety for people my age during enrich our community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jaden Jones. I'm here because I'm concerned that public schools in Lake City are not compatible with other parts of South Carolina due to inevitable levels of funding across the school districts. This issue is important to me because it's unfair to students like me who want the best education possible. It's also important to me because it's also important because it could cause population decline in the city since some parents might want better educational opportunities for their children and might lead to Lake City to have the better opportunities for their child. To solve this issue, I want the city of Lake City to raise local taxes or develop a bond measure to contribute to funding of schools and educational programs. In the 2019 and 2020 school year, Forest District 3 spent $44.3 million, compared to Greenville's District 1, where it spent more than $1.2 billion. This means Forest District 3 spent $13,305 per student and Greenville District 3, District 1, spent $15,588, or $2,283 more than Forest District 3. As a result, in 2022, SC's Ready Scores test scores show 54.4% of 8th grade students in Forest School District 3 approached, meet, or exceeded expectations in English Language Arts and 32.4% in Mathematics, compared to 8th grade students in Greenville District 1, where 71.2% of students approached, meet, or exceeded expectations for English Language Arts and 64.3% for Mathematics. People might disagree if we should raise taxes that they already pay enough taxes, but this issue can also be solved using a bond measure. When I talked to the mayor, she told me that no one likes to hear about raising taxes, but sometimes it's necessary to benefit the city. Either way, spending money, more money on students will help kids get better educations and be prepared for college and career after high school to navigate life as a young adult. This is important because kids are the future, and if a good future for Lake City is wanted, this should be considered. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. You did so well. And then he's like, I'm glad that's over. Thank the class so much. I definitely enjoyed my time a couple of weeks ago, sitting down with these students, talking with them, hearing their voice, hearing their concerns. This is our future. This is their concerns. And the question's been asked, you know, what is my vision and goal for City of Lake City? Well, it's the same as theirs because I'm representing them as everybody else. So, you know, I commend you for coming up here because it's not easy to actually stand before mayor and council, your leadership of the city, and the constituents as well to actually voice your concerns. But I say keep standing tall, keep standing out, keep speaking out because your voice does matter. And I do appreciate you coming and voicing today. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Next, we have presentations. We have four different presentations tonight. We're going to try to go through them as quickly as we can. Mayor Robinson, Proclamation for Active People, Healthy Nation. Ms. Lisa Jones, Presentation, Lake City LSR, LR Project. Ms. Kayla Hodge and Alan Appenethy, City of Lake City Downtown Walking Trail. Mark Fountain and Bertha Scott for the Lake City Housing Authority. It would go in that order. I will begin with the proclamation, and for time, I'm not going to read the entire proclamation. I will just read some. It's Active People, Healthy Nation proclamation. Whereas the mayor and council members of Lake City, South Carolina, are committed to supporting a thriving, vibrant, and healthier community for all residents. Whereas the city of Lake City recognizes the importance of providing access to safe and convenient places to be physically active for all people. Whereas approximately 1 in 5 children and 2 in 5 adults in the U.S. have obesity. Whereas more than 2 in 5 school-aged children and adolescents have at least one chronic health condition. Therefore, it be resolved effective April 8th, 2025, the city of Lake City recognizes that physical activity is one of the best ways that adults, children, and families can help improve their health. And considering the foregoing considerations, the city of Lake City hereby commits to supporting Active People, Healthy Nation strategies by implementing the following strategies. One, increasing physical activity through community design. This strategy will help to make it safe and easy to walk or stroll for all people by improving the design of the city limits of Lake City by connecting routes such as sidewalks, trails, and public transit to destinations such as grocery stores, schools, work sites, libraries, parks, and/or healthcare facilities, as well, community-wide campaigns. This strategy will promote physical activity by combining a variety of strategies, such as media coverage and promotions, risk factor screening and education, community events, and pragmatic initiatives, such as walking trails or social supports. Signed by yours truly, Yumika Robinson, Mayor of Lake City, South Carolina, on this day, April 8th, 2025. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Jones, a presentation on tonight.
Thank you. My presentation, as it were, goes to the city's Lead Service Line Replacement Project, which we received a state revolving fund forgivable loan to pay for. We approved and accepted these funds back in June of last year, and we are moving forward with the project, developing the final design. And one of the requirements of this process is that we may have a public hearing in which we inform residents about what we are doing. This project involves removal of lead and galvanized steel service lines in approximately 300 properties. It involves removing all lead or galvanized goosenecks, pig tails, connectors, and replacement with an acceptable material that's appropriate under 40 CFR 143. It also involves replacement of curb stops, curb stop boxes, and other service line adjustments, whatever, and site restoration. So this is a project that we are moving forward with. South Carolina Department of Environmental Services requires that we inform the residents through this public hearing process. The next step is to get the approved preliminary engineering report, which will involve the project design. At that point, we will provide more information. If residents want to know anything else about this project, they can get in touch with the city, specifically me, and we will have full details about the project once we have the final approved preliminary engineering report. At this point, I can provide people with information from the project application, which would give information about which properties are going to be affected by this project. But that is something that I would do with them individually. So anybody who believes that they are impacted by lead and galvanized steel service lines and thinks that they might be involved in this project, please feel free to get in touch with me. My name is Lisa Jones. I'm the grant writer for the city, and I can let you know if your property will be covered by this project. We've already accepted these funds, and this is a fully forgivable loan. That is to say, there will be no cost to the city for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Approximately how many residents you think may be affected by this? Do you have a clue?
About 300.
Okay.
The exact number, for whatever reason, I thought it was like 327, but I couldn't find the exact number in the narrative. But it's approximately 300. I have the full list, and I didn't count it before I came here. But if anybody thinks that they might be affected, if you are in an older neighborhood, that's probably something that you might want to contact me about to confirm whether or not you will be impacted.
Okay. So mostly, the old neighborhood would probably be affected.
This, the lead service lines and galvanized steel service lines go back to like the 1960s and earlier. So if your house is of that vintage, there is the possibility that you have service lines that are of that age, and it is worthwhile to find out. If you find out that you have that and are not part of this project, we still want to document that because EPA is pursuing the possibility of additional funding to address all lead and copper service lines. At this point, we have the funds for these properties, and we're able to move forward with them, but there may be future projects.
So what criteria did you use to determine, you said, old neighborhoods?
I did not, I didn't write this grant. This was the vintage 2022, before my time. But there was a survey done, and what exactly was done in terms of identifying the content of those service lines? I know part of what we have done in the past is collect that information from public works, as well as from the residents.
Because I know something came out about mid-year, I think, last year?
It's about November?
Goose neck.
It's the same thing?
That is something that EPA is teeing up as the next phase in this project. Now, that's not related to this specific project, but a broader national project to do away with lead and galvanized service lines or in any way having lead and copper or galvanized steel as well in our water systems because it poses a hazard.
Okay, because when it came up last year, the person who presented this said that they had already identified 155 homes, I think. And I specifically asked for a list of those homes. And I don't know if this is the same list with added homes to it?
I have a list of the addresses that are covered under this project. I would be happy to provide that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I mean, all the council members.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Next presentation. Yes.
Thank you so much, if you'll go to our presentation. So for those that don't know me, my name's Allen Abernathy. I'm the executive director of MUSC Health Black River Medical Center. And I'm here to answer questions about our proposed walking trail. I'd be remiss to say, just in case you guys have hard questions, I did bring with me Merritt Dowdell from our External Affairs Department, who's also hugely involved in a lot of our community projects. So I think I'd like to start by reading an excerpt from our joint community health needs assessment that we completed with McLeod Health and with Hope Health, along with MUSC Health. Every so often, we poll the community and really dig into what the community needs. And I think this is really well timed for the mayor's proclamation and, of course, the young lady's presentation. But according to our last community health needs assessment, we found that Lake City has a higher average rate of obesity, diabetes, and cardiovascular disease compared to both the state and national averages. Specifically, 39% of the population in Lake City is classified as obese. Our assessment also revealed that local residents identify obesity, nutrition, and physical activity as their top health concerns. That's a major factor that contributes to health disparities that we have in our community. And really, only 45% of our residents report engaging in some sort of physical activity outside of their work every week. And I think more specifically, what MUSC Health has found is that largely someone's health and well-being, only about 20% of their overall health and well-being, comes from actual healthcare, so their physicians and their caregivers. 80% of someone's well-being will come from how they live their lives on a day-to-day basis, how they eat, their physical activity. And so we've got a mandate that comes from the president of MUSC, and that mandate is that South Carolina will be in the top 20 states for health and well-being in 20 years. And in order to do that, we've got to get outside of the walls of our healthcare facilities and into our communities. And so today, the designation really of a walking trail, we didn't pick the trail. We left that up to the city to pick the trail in partnership with the Creative Alliance to pick where the walking trail would be. We thought that was important that you guys picked the space. MUSC's part in this is really a partnership after this designation is granted. So we see the designation of this walking trail as the foundation of building the walking trail up. The designation is really the first part. The second part is partnering with MUSC to analyze the space and to help co-sponsor a grant that'll help us make that space safe, make it well-lit, and make it really nice for our community. And so that's really what the designation is for. And it doesn't have to be just one. You know, I'd love to see multiple walking trails in our community. But the trail, our ex-program, is really a partnership with Clemson. And in that partnership, what we would do, and we are already designated partners of Clemson, and so what we would do is our providers, our Hope Health providers, McLeod providers, MUSC providers, would prescribe walks on this walking trail. And there would be a QR code on this walking trail to where our community could log their walks, and then their provider, you know, when they go back to see their doctor, could say, I see you've been walking like prescribed. It's really just a way to try to incentivize our community to be healthier. And so I think that's really it in a high level. So if you guys have questions, I'd love to try to answer those.
How long is this walking trail?
Our proposal is half a mile, so you'd walk it twice for a mile. It's downtown Lake City. It's downtown Lake City.
Can you tell exactly where it would begin, beginning and end?
There may be a, Kayla, is there a slide? Will you? Oh, look, there's a little guy that slides around there. Very nice, Kayla. I like that. I'm going to have to get her to do my slides at work.
So is this Saul Street?
Kayla, can you, or Saul, if you will elaborate on it, just identify where these streets are, please. So this is a half-mile route?
It is.
It starts at the corner of Saul Street and North Church, right there where the Express Car is with MUOC. And then you head down Church Street, and you turn onto Henry. Now, this is option A. I gave you two options. Option A, you turn on the second entrance for Henry, and you go on South Act Line, and then you turn back on Saul's. So you make a loop. And this is option B. So instead of taking the second right onto Henry, you would take the first right and go through the breezeway beside Baker Suites, come up Main, go down North Act Line, and turn onto Saul's. So I wanted to give you guys two options. And, you know, if you guys would rather go with something else, I will come back next month.
Thank you.
And I think there's, and there's not a reason why we couldn't do more than one trail, like mentioned. I think really, I think we've got an opportunity to partner, which, you know, really, really helps when we're writing grants, really helps to show that unity between healthcare and government. And so I think that would be beneficial for us. So I think we've got a good opportunity to do this probably more than once. So, you know.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation, we have Mr. Mark Fountain and Ms. Bertha Scott, Lake City Housing Authority.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to our Honorable Mayor, Lisa Robinson.
Thank you.
And our city council members. I want to thank you first of all for allowing us the opportunity and you appointing strong board members. Our main concern to the city of Lake City is security. Safe, clean environment. And I want you all to understand we have a hundred and thirty secure cameras in the city of Lake City in our residential area. And within that, we work very closely with the police department, and they can come in and review our cameras and see all the activities that goes on in these areas. And that information is documented to us, which we use and collaborate with you. Also, I want you to realize that we are very strong in Johnsonville. We have thirty-two cameras in Johnsonville. And they have played a significant role with the sheriff department in finding several crimes that has happened there. And we work with them very closely as well. We also want you all to know that with Housing Authority, this is an area that can help Lake City grow in all aspects. Because they are in the city, I'm gonna ask you all to please start visiting those areas because the majority of those areas are in your voting areas. We need to get them more involved so they can come out and see some of the things that you're doing and some of the changes that you can make in the Housing Authority. Housing Authority residents are very strong. They want that opportunity to engage in what you are doing. And another one of our areas, and I know you all know about it, is our Resident Association. They work everywhere. They involved by bringing things into the community. They go out and work in the community. They work with the students. We have other programs that we work with. We work with the Damon Project. We also provide spaces for our free lunches program. We even have the swap book program with District Three. All those things come through the Housing Authority. And I want you all to continue to work with us. Come and visit us at the Lake City Housing Authority with our meetings, and some of you have. And I'm inviting you to come back because I miss you. Come and talk with us.
You finished?
No, but go ahead.
You'll be up there all night long.
Yeah, I will. I just, go right here.
Oh, you mentioned the residents were to be involved in the city?
Yes.
And coming to the meetings.
Coming to the meetings.
Is there, can you do anything to encourage them? Maybe remind them of the meetings, send out flyers or what have you?
The staff is super strong that we have.
We meet every Tuesday, every second Tuesday.
Well, you, the staff is, good.
I'm charging you with.
Oh, I love it.
And I'm doing it because I know I can do it, right?
Yes, yeah.
I can charge you with that responsibility of getting the residents to us. If there's anything we can do to help further encourage that, let us know.
Very good thought because the staff is here tonight. And I'm gonna charge that to Mark Fountain, who is our strong leader. Let the staff get this information out to the residents, and we're gonna find a way for them to come because they need to see who you are. They need to know who you are, and they need to know how to work with you. And she already done told me I haven't talked too long, but come and visit me anytime if you want to. I'm gonna let Mark Fountain come up and give you some more good information.
I'm aware of providing you anytime.
Okay, good. I want you all to know, I work with the city, and I'm not gonna stop working with the city. You're doing a good job, and we're gonna keep Lake City number one, okay? Love you all.
Thank you, Ms. Bertha.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I know I don't have much time. Jonathan, I had a slideshow prepared for you all tonight. And I know that I've only got.
That's fine, go ahead.
But I wanted the council and the city to know that Lake City actually has four hundred and thirty-four units here in Lake City and throughout the Olanta area, as well as Johnsonville. Jonathan, you can go ahead and go through the slides. I'm trying to be quick for council and the city residents. But we have units, we've done things on Brown Street. For instance, we have the PD Community Action using that building that we allow them to use. In our Durant, Almond Springs streets, we're getting ready to add metal roofs to those communities. And that's coming in the near future. And then if you look at our Buff Road area, we've added new gazebo's for the residents in our Buff Road area, excuse me, Ryan McNair area as well. We're working hard, we're working hard. We also have two hundred and nineteen base vouchers, vouchers housed in the private sector of Lower Florence and Williamsburg County. And that's with fifty-seven owners participating in the Section Eight program. We're trying to cover the areas of Lake City and try to help Lake City grow. And I know I'm short of time now. But we appreciate everything that council and a mayor and council does for the Lake City Housing Authority. And I'd like to come back when I have some more time permitted to speak with you all about some other things we have going on with the neighborhoods. So I thank you for the little bit of time that I had. And I look forward to seeing you all again. Thank you so much. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Fountain.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bertha. Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Thanks, everybody, for all your presentations tonight.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I brought my staff with us as well.
Can the staff, can the staff please stand?
This is our administrative staff.
Yes. And we have board members here as well.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, we have board members here. Board members, will you please stand as well, please?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you, thank you.
We look forward to coming back.
Yes. I look forward to having more conversations with you, more discussions because I love this, and we see the partnership from the city of Lake City with the Housing Authority, with our young people, with every type of entity in our city. Partnerships and with our hospitals, partnerships are very, very important. There's no organization or no entity that can do it alone. We have to partner with each other to make sure that our city is moving forward, especially for our young people. So I appreciate everybody coming out here tonight and making your presentations. Keep coming, keep coming. I love the presentations. It's informing us as the city council and informing our residents as well because I'm pretty sure there's plenty of people in here tonight that learned something about Housing Authority, learned something about our walking trails. And maybe they have questions for you, too. Maybe our young people want to know more about the Housing Authority. So thank you so much again for coming out and making your presentations. Yes.
We all look forward to more presentations. Mark and Bertha, we really look forward to it.
Thank you. We do have one last, one last presentation, and that's Ms. Brown, Sharina Brown. Is she here? She's not here. That's fine, we will move forward. Next on our agenda, we have public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigations will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Gloria Tisdale, with the Carpenter High School alumni. I appeared here twice. This is my third, this is my third time appearing before mayor and council. My request was, or is, to name the administrative building of the city of Lake City after the late Mayor Wilford Barr. I have here with me tonight, I've done this orally both times, so this time I have a written request from the association, as well as from the family of the honorable late Mayor Wilford Barr, Ms. Deborah Pinkney, who's here with me tonight. She's the sister of Mayor Barr, as well as a statement from his son. So I'd like to give this to mayor and council as backup for my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Brown just stepped in. Okay.
There's three, there's three pages. What I do is scan it into everyone.
Hello, Ms. Brown. Doing well.
We're not here to take up too much of your time. I just want to read a little bit of what we're here for, and then we'll share what our proposal is for you guys. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. So eight years ago, two mothers, Trina Johnson and myself, began a journey that would significantly impact their lives. They were both concerned, we were both concerned, about our children's growth and development, as well as the unusual behaviors that posed challenges. After reaching out to doctors, special services, and educational departments, both children were diagnosed with autism. Accepting this news was not easy, but we remained strong, and we were determined to provide our children with the same opportunity as other children in our community. We won't underestimate our children. We will have the same, or we feel like they will have, and we know that they will have, the same opportunities and thrive just like every other child in our community, is what we see. As they shared numerous experiences, both positive and negative, we realized that the need to support our parents facing similar challenges. Consequently, we organized a first autism awareness event that happened on April 2nd, 2017, for families in Lake City, Florence, King Street, and surrounding areas to offer support and help for the unique journeys of our children. So I'm gonna just name who we have so far in our community. We have Caleb, he's thirteen. Javion Hall, five years old. Jamison Jenkins, fourteen years old. Kason Opsadon, five years old. Desmond Jones, twenty years old. Leon Ford, the third, thirteen years old. Rakim Rafli is eight years old. Scarlett Johnson is seven years old. Bryson Brown, fourteen years old. Carter Singletary, nine years old. Kirkland Hare, ten years old. Quentin Johnson, fourteen years old. And we even have King here. He's eight years old. Noah Moore is ten years old, and Jalen Mitchell is twenty-two years old. And we also have Special Alternating Hemiplegia of Childhood, and her name is Leila Wilson. So what we would like to propose to Lake City, our community, on next year, or every year, we have an autism event. And right now, it's mainly just families. It's not community yet, and that's okay. It's just families. But what we would like to propose is that we get more of the community involved with the autism awareness throughout the month of April. So one thing that we would like to try to do, I won't say try, I would say we're gonna do, is a parade next year. I think that would be a good way of kind of getting the community involved. Everybody loves a parade. Autistic kids love parades because it doesn't really require them to speak. It doesn't really require them to do anything, but just kind of watch everybody come through and enjoy the ceremony. Another thing that we would really like to get done is our officials, the police officers, the firefighters, sheriff's offices, trying to get them more involved with how to handle emergencies in that situation. For example, if something happened to a mom and dad at home, let's say they're passed out somewhere, or they were shot and killed accidentally. Let's just say that doesn't happen. But an autistic child would more than likely probably pick that gun up or have it in their hand or just standing there and maybe not even be able to say anything, or they may start shouting, kill, kill, or dead, dead. The cops at that time, they're on alert to protect, so they're not gonna know right at hand that this is a child with autism. It is growing in this community. There are a lot of parents in Lake City who I haven't even met yet, but a lot that have reached out to me. Lots of kids that are being diagnosed with this. It's happening rapidly. Not as much so as when we started out in 2017. So what we would like to propose to the community is just to get you guys involved a little bit more with us. Help us create that parade for next year. Get the community involved. Anything else that you guys can think of to help us, and then we'll reach those higher heights. This is a large passion, a big passion for myself and these parents that are standing here before us. This is King Ma, Team King's mom, Thressa. This is Team Quentin's mom, Trina Johnson, and myself, Sharina Brown. If you guys can do anything, and I mean anything, to help us get the awareness going, get the support going, we will greatly, greatly appreciate it. And I am down on two, one. Thank y'all. Love you guys. I'm gonna leave a, we're gonna leave a book for you guys so y'all can look at it. And we thank y'all so much. Please contact us and let us know. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown, one question.
Do we have permission to?
Do you have, do you have a website or contact information you can give now?
We don't have a website, but I do have phone numbers and emails are inside of the book. It's on the back of the book? The front of the book. So we're gonna leave that with you guys, if that's okay. And we would love for you guys to reach out and help us out with that, okay?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll leave both, 2024 and 2025. Okay.
Well, I'll look for 2026.
All right. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right. Okay, any other public comment period? We're still in public comment. Thank you, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My name's Elliot Askins. At the last budget workshop, I was alarmed when the city's finance director, Brandon, warned that if we stay on the current path, the city could run out of money by this summer. And he asked a key question. Should we raise taxes or borrow more money? I've been studying some past city audits, so I want to share with you why I think these options won't fix the problem. One thing this crisis didn't happen overnight. General fund deficit spending started to appear in 2022. The city was still in good shape and ended the year with a three-million-dollar surplus. And fast forward to year 2023, and that three-million-dollar surplus had dropped to 1.7 million. The drop would have been larger, but that year, the city took around one million from Water and Sewer to fill the gap, money that probably should have gone to infrastructure improvements. The late audit is not out. The delayed audit is not out for year 2024, but I can assume that surplus was probably consumed by then. And during this time, taxes and water sewer rates were raised, but deficit spending continued. We were living off borrowed money and reserve funds, not fixing the core issue. Now, here we are approaching, uh, June 2025, the surplus is gone, and we're $2.6 million in the red. Because we're spending more than we take in, that debt is increasing every month. Raising taxes can't fix this because state law only allows taxes to rise at the rate of inflation and population growth, which is around 3% this year. So even if we raise taxes at the max allowable by law, that would be less than $100,000, a drop in the bucket compared to our deficit. And more borrowing, if a bank would lend to us, would only kick the can down the road. To fix this, we must spend less than we take in, and that's the only sustainable solution. So I urge everyone to please get an experienced interim city administrator and a sustainable budget in place as quickly as possible. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Got 10 seconds left. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if none, we're gonna move forward in our agenda. Next, we, um, we have our legislative portion. We have Mr. Brandon Carter. Well, no, you're fine. You, you good? Okay, all right. Okay, ordinance 2025.001 amended for second reading. An ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina seeking approval to accept the new Lake City tree ordinance and other matters related thereto. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Has been properly moved in second. Any discussion, council? No discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Any opposed? None. Ordinance passed. Next, we go to our resolutions. Resolution 2025.011, a resolution seeking approval to allow the city to recognize the Lake City downtown walking trail to support walking as a community, recreational activity, and other matters related thereto. Need a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Has been properly moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Voting.
Oh. So no discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. All in favor, show of hands? Okay, none opposed. Thank you. Resolution 2025.011 passes. Resolution 2025.10, point 012, excuse me, a resolution establishing April as fair housing month for the city of Lake City and all other matters thereto.
Motion approved. Second.
So it properly moved in second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands? Unposed. Thank you. Resolution 2025.013, the city of Lake City would like to appoint the following to the Architectural Review Board, ARB, for a two-year term. Spencer Player for a one consecutive term, expiration date April 8, 2027. Need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions or discussion, council?
Do we, um, do we have other applicants for this position?
To my knowledge, there was no other applicants, only one.
Was it advertised?
It was.
Where was it advertised?
It was advertised on social media. It was advertised, um, on, in the administration building, in the bulletin board, in the back, close to the water department. Um, I want to say it was advertised on the website as well.
And how long was it advertised?
Do you remember what date it was advertised on? For two years.
Advertised for two years? Well, he's dead, so it was like day in the morn.
Oh, and yes, Mr. Spencer Player is in the audience. Can you raise your hand, please?
Maybe I'm an overlooked one.
And also match board, I'd want to say. Yes, match board online as well. Any other questions, council?
How long have you been in that, in this position?
He has.
It's your second term.
Your first term.
Okay. There was something else you served on, I think, right?
No.
Okay, okay, okay.
Drugstore.
Drug dealer.
If, if no other questions, all in favor, show of hands? Thank you. Resolution 2025.014, the city of Lake City would like to reappoint the following to the Architectural Review Board, ARB, for a two-year term. Mr. Harley Lee, Harley Lee, this is the third consecutive term. Expiration date April 8, 2027. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
Same questions. Was it advertised?
Same answers.
Grand day.
If no other questions, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Resolution 2025.015, a resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina approving the signed state and local government customer end-user subscription agreement, find help, and all other matters thereto. Need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry. Second, okay. Has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands? Resolution 2025.016, a resolution accepting Duke Energy Foundation mini grant for a project at Martha Law Park and other matters related thereto. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Has been properly moved in second. You got that clerk? I'm sorry. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands? Resolution 2025.10017, a resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina seeking the approval to rescind previous check signature cards with First Citizen Bank and update with the current signatures and other matters related thereto. Need a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
Who's signature is on this, um, on the card?
Look, if you want to look in your packet.
Who, who saw the public now?
Yes. Um, first, go ahead. You can go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yes.
So it was the previous administrator, the previous deputy city administrator, myself, Mayor Robinson, and, um,
Chief Triggers.
Jonathan Black, Chief Triggers. Yes, ma'am.
And clerk.
And clerk.
Oh, and Marsha, I'm sorry.
Former clerk.
Yes, and the city clerk, the previous city clerk, Marsha Tony.
So minus the other two, there would be three.
Correct.
Yours.
Mine's the mayors and chief triggers. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Let me ask you. Will, um, when the new, if it wouldn't be get a new clerk, will her signature go on there too?
That'd be up to the mayor and council, councilwoman, that, that.
It would have to be brought to council meeting again.
Brought to council, and I will ask for your wisdom in regards to that.
Okay, I'm trying to remember all the other names when it came to council.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. What I'll do, I, I create, uh, pretty much, give the mayor Robinson as far as putting that on the agenda and it'd be up to mayor and council to make that executive decision.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're adding, we're removing, and we're adding one name because we need at least four right now. And we're adding Patrick Miles, Chief Miles.
I think I'll need that red top.
Any other questions? No? All in favor, show of hands? Thank you. Resolution 2025.018, a resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina seeking approval for the 12th Judicial Circuit Traffic Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement and other matters related thereto. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? Okay. If none, all in favor, show of hands? Next, we have our city administrative reports, monthly finance report, Mr. Brandon Carter, Executive Finance Director.
Good evening, Mary and council.
Good evening.
I will be, uh, giving you the report, the financial report, March, uh, month ending of, uh, March 31st of 2025. For our general fund, our year-to-date is $5.3 million, 74, uh, 791. And revenue expenditures is 8.3 million, 53, 456. That puts us at a deficit at 2.9 million, 78, and 665. Our water fund, our year-to-date as far as revenue is 1.4 million, 95, 366. And expenditures is 1.2 million, 20, 645. Would put us as a surplus at 274,721. Our sewer fund, our year-to-date for revenue is 2.5 million, excuse me, 63, 596. And expenditure is 2.5 million, 41, 774, would put us on a surplus at 21,822. Uh, for stone water, our year-to-date is 164,00214. And expenditures is 37,500, would put us at a surplus at 126,714. Uh, for our water reserve, our year-to-date is 129,45. And our sewer reserve, our year-to-date is 126,236 and 25 cents. And Mayor Council, that is our council, uh, monthly financial report, March, uh, March 31st.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Approval of monthly bills, April 2025 bill list. Need a motion to approve items one through four for April 8, 2025?
Move to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? No questions? All in favor, show of hands, please? Thank you. Lake City Police Department, we have Chief Miles for report. His report.
All right. For the month of March 2025, our total calls for service is 1,722 calls for service. Um, and I'll just hit some of the high points in here. That includes 518 traffic stops, 534 property checks, 32 trespassing calls, seven shooting calls, and again, remind everybody, that's cause of shots fired, not necessarily seven people getting shot. Um, there have been some arrests made in one of the recent shootings, and they have identified some individuals and elements, just don't have evidence to come back for causing the cases to be found.
Excuse me, one second. Can y'all look here okay? Okay, just want to make sure.
There were 32 warrant service calls, 21 harassment threatens, four vandalisms, 31 suspicious vehicles, 34 disorderlies, seven traffic accidents, and 17 animal complaints. That was handled by our animal control officer, Jordan McCants.
Oh, Jordan is in the back.
So that's, that's a recent position that was kind of, the police department adopted code enforcement for the city. And when we did code enforcement, in my mind, it wasn't a full-time position. So in order to make it a full-time position and keep it a full-time position, we kind of split it and put animal control on in. So she's been doing that as well. And she is up to, I think, 11 animals removed from the city, stray or dangerous animals removed this month alone. And for the duration, you're up to over 100, correct?
Um, I've heard 100 calls for service. I've upped it 53 out of the city in four months.
So that's, that's a significant amount of animals.
Thank you.
So, um, also out of those, that 1722 number, um, and 518 traffic stops, there was 223 traffic violations written, 51 vehicle license violations, 16 simple possession of marijuanas, 55 speeding tickets were issued, seven operating uninsured, 30 driver's license violations, nine driving under suspensions, and four DUIs. You're gonna start seeing the DUIs pick up for the summertime. That's, that's typical of any jurisdiction. It just seems like more people are out enjoying themselves and stuff like that. So it happens more in the summertime statistically than it does at the wintertime. We done 204 incident reports. Uh, there was 40 of those incident reports that, that came with an arrest that was made. There were 59 warrants issued and 34 arrests weren't served. And that'll round out the, the numbers for March of 2025. And that's kind of in line with the previous numbers that we've had as we begin the summer months, as we're going into spring and summer. So there's no outrageous crime or anything like that that's taking place. It's the, the, the standard and normal uptick and stuff that we see. So there's nothing, no cause for concern in any of that. And I thank you for the mutual aid agreement with the 12th Judicial Circuit, L.A.N. That's, uh, that's something that our team really enjoys doing. And they enjoy us being there, according to the host agency, which is the airport police right now.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
I do want to, um, mention that we've already had two crime watch meetings for District One and District Two so far this year. We do plan to have them continuously for each district. So please, um, look out for those, um, those announcements on our website or Facebook page. Next will be District Three. Don't know the time and place just yet, but hopefully very soon. So everyone, you don't have to live in that district to come out. You can come out, um, even if you live in another district, it's fine. But just come out to these crime watch meetings.
And if I may, the, the plan is with these things is, you know, it's, it's where you can ask questions and get answers. A lot of times at council meetings, you can't get that because the way it's designed. But at those, those crime watch meetings, we're there to provide answers. If not, we'll find the answer together. That's the whole design behind those. And I, I would like to try to have two districts meet per month and, and just keep it running throughout a calendar year like that. So that's, that's, that's the plan. There, sometimes they're held here. They can be held at 278. Or if there, a certain district or council member's got a place that, where they want to have them, that's fine too. Churches anywhere.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we're, um, gonna have our council member and mayor reports. We decided to swap since before, anytime we have an executive session. So anytime we have an executive session and it prolongs, we won't have you waiting to come back in to hear our reports. So now we're gonna do our council member reports and mayor reports at this time. We are gonna do the same session, yes. We can start with Councilwoman Crosby.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. Um, it's been a, a beneficial meeting, informative. And if you will, let your constituents know about these meetings. And Ms. Bertha Scott, uh, as I said earlier, we'll be connecting so we can get the people in the housing, uh, in the housing authority to, um, attend these meetings. And, um, Gloria Tisdale, um, I'd like to talk with you to see what else you need to have done. And if you will, get me a copy of that, um, report so we can, um, work on that. And, um, that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. Um, first, I would like to thank the students from Ronnie Emane near Digital Communication and Leadership, eighth grade social studies class, for coming out to share your thoughts and concerns, uh, with council on what we need to do or what we, or what you guys would like us to do in order to make Lake City better for you. I greatly appreciate that. I was actually just talking to Councilman Brown today about this whole situation. And then you guys came with your thoughts and concerns, so. then you guys came with your thoughts and concerns, so I, I appreciate that. And again, you will be heard. It may not be right now, but we are definitely gonna be working for the betterment and the future of our youth in Lake City. So thank you guys again for coming out. And please, any other thoughts or concerns, tell your friends as well, because you're, you may have your own ideas and your friends may have their own ideas as well. So encourage them as well to come to council meetings to present to us as well, because we do want to hear your, your voices matter. Secondly, I would like to thank the other, the other people that came out, oh, excuse me, the other presenters, how about that, that came out. Again, we, as counsel, we hear you, and we, we're going to do, I'm sure we all in agreeance with doing what we need to do to make your ideas and thoughts come to fruition. And I would just like to say, continue to be safe, stay vigilant, and have a wonderful night.
And pardon me, excuse me. I apologize profusely for forgetting our young people, you all, our future, and I please accept my apology. Thank you all for presenting and look forward to you all coming more often. So when you go home, if your parents didn't come with you, ask your parents to come with you to the council meetings, okay?
I think we do have, we do have some parents here tonight. Yeah, we have some parents.
Yeah. Well, you parents encourage the other parents too, okay?
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Scott.
Okay, me too, can echo to what was said already for thanking the student, parents, everyone for coming out this evening, the Housing Authority, of course. I do have something in work for next month for the housing, especially the one on fifty-two, my seniors. Usually I do something every year with them, but I will get in contact with, is Eric staying with, with Eric, of course? He works so hard with the senior in that area. And also, I'd like to thank, and welcome Head Start into our area to Wesley for them having lived, I said. I wasn't there, I had an appointment, but I know it would be bothering to our community. And when I heard him talking about the walking and knowing the history about our community and what happened, heart disease and diabetes, and I've lost twenty pounds. So I wanna live. It's good to be alive, but I wanna live and not just be here, but be able to function with my mind and everything. When I first heard him saying, I thought he was saying that we're gonna be a trail from here to Black River, I said, I don't think I can walk that far. But anyhow, it's good for our community, for, because health is about it. If we ain't no good health, we can't continue to be here, we can't continue to see our children. And I, and I sit and look at so many of our young people so healthy, you know, and it, it, it really bothered me, I, I kinda get disturbed. So I say, I can't look at them and they myself, and I'm wearing two plus, and not do something about myself too. So it's very important, and I'd like to know that I'm always here, and my concern is about the children, my concern is about Lake City. Anything I can do, it may not look like a lot, but if you let me know, I will surely do my best to try to be there for you. So let's continue to work together, continue to show love, that's all it is, love one another. And because crime, when I hear about death anywhere, especially tragic one, it disturb me, who's getting killed? Young African-American boys are getting killed because they're not caring, they're not concerned. So we as parent, I'm so proud to see the parent here, to give the children a better future and good look at Lake City, that it's a place to live, work, play, and visit. And we continue to accept that in their mind, we want them to be better students, better citizens. And I love y'all, and that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Mr. Player, thank you back. It's always good to do, I always see like the drugstore when I go there. So he always serving our community, thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, the students. We enjoyed your presentations, very informative, and the people who spoke in public comment period. Elliot, thank you for staying under two minutes. I also wanted to thank Jordan McCants. She called me last week at my house and said, a potentially aggressive dog was spotted at my yard. She came out right away, placed the, the, the dog trap, and caught the dog the next morning. I really appreciate that for not only my own children's safety, but everyone in the neighborhood. There's a lot of people in our neighborhood who walk, children playing all the time, so we really appreciate what she's doing to keep, keep everyone safe. And just thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, council members, for your reports. I want to thank everyone for, for everything and for coming out tonight, for being here for our council meeting, also is watching on Facebook and social media. I ask everyone to please encourage everyone to come out to these meetings so they can stay informed and stay engaged with the business and the growth of our city. Also, I want to ask everyone to please, let's keep Ms. Cynthia Mallett in our prayers. She had surgery last week, but she's now recovering. If you have any questions and concerns or suggestions for the Recreation and Tourism Department, please contact the Deputy Director, Mr. Grayson Boynton. I want to thank Mr. Grayson for doing just a fine job this past weekend at the recreation opening day for softball and baseball. You can see the pictures there that was taken. He had such a great day and a safe day that day, so thank you, Grayson. Thanks to all our presenters tonight. He brought very valuable information in public comment period as well. We were taking consideration in all that was stated. I think for all the partners that we have here tonight, I think our young people, keep doing what you're doing. Let's keep working together for the City of Lake City. Thank everyone for coming out to our past few events, community meetings, and more such as the Highway Fifty-two Infrastructure Project Meeting, LC two seventy-eight on March twenty-second, our Budget Workshop we had on March twenty-ninth, and the Job Fair that was at the Continuum. That was fantastic. They had a huge crowd out there at the Job Fair at the Continuum. Our upcoming events we have is Art Fields, we know will be on April twenty-fifth through May third. And Lake City actually is partnering with, with them on Saturday night, we will have the band, Encore Live Band, on April twenty-six, seven, and nine on the Village Green. We will also have our Community Cleanup, April twenty-third, from twelve to two. We'll have our Community Yard Sale at LC two seventy-eight on May third, eight, eight to one o'clock, and everybody can contact Ms. Nikisha Izard at the City of Lake City if you would like to be involved with the Community Yard Sale. We also have our Food Truck Rodeo, May thirty-first, twelve to six, on the Village Green. Wear your boots and bring your hat, fan, excuse me. Bring the fans. We also have a Women's Symposium, well, not the City of Lake City, but we are, we do have a Women's Symposium, which will be on April tenth, this Thursday, is What's Her Story, Conversations with Women Leaders in South Carolina. And yours truly, Yemika Robinson, the Mayor of Lake City, will be one of the panelists on that day amongst all these amazing women here. So please, it's free, open to the public, so please come out if you can. It will be at Francis Marion University, one to six thirty. Once again, I want to thank the eighth grade class from Dr. Ronnie McNear School for coming out tonight to share their concerns and your ideas for a better Lake City for everyone. I thoroughly enjoyed the time that we had together discussing a couple of weeks ago. Remember that your voice matters. Your mayor thanks you, and your mayor supports you and the council, so thank you again. I want to sincerely thank Mayor Pro Tim Cooper for presiding last month meeting on my behalf in, in my place, in my absence. That day, on that day during that week, myself and Ms. Lisa Jones, the grant writer, we attended the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference, which was held in D.C. It was one of the most impactful moments at that conference. It was Hill Day, and this picture shows myself, Ms. Lisa, and several other elected officials from across the state of South Carolina. We were meeting in Congressman Clyburn's office. So we had an opportunity to sit and talk with our congressional representatives and their staff to advocate for our cities across the nation. And that is the end of my reports. I ask everyone to please govern themselves accordingly, and now I need a motion to move into executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Sections thirty dash four dash seventy-eight one dash two, for the discussion of personnel employment compensation or appointments and the receipt of legal advice.
Move to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved in second. All in favor? Show of hands. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I need a motion to come out of an executive session, please.
What's your motion?
Who made the motion?
I do.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any questions? All in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the mayor, effective tomorrow, Wednesday, April 9th, to hire Stephen Thompson. And where's the attorney? The attorney, authorized attorney to enter to a contractual agreement with him. All in favor?
Nothing. No action is needed with respect to matters discussed in executive session. May I get a motion to adjourn?
No, Charlie, I just made a motion to authorize the mayor to, as effective tomorrow, May 9th, April 9th, to enter or make contact with Stephen Thompson, to offer him the job tomorrow. Do I get a second?
There's no second. No action is needed with respect to matters discussed in executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Need a second? We have to do better. We gotta do better. Everybody in this, we gotta do better than this. I don't understand how much this is costing us. We gotta do better than this.
All right, has there been a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes.
Has that been seconded?
Yes.
Has that been voted on?
Yes.
Then I immediately made a motion to authorize the mayor to hire Stephen Thompson, effective tomorrow, April 9th.
For one, can I ask why authorize the mayor? Because that's a mayor and counsel.
Well, well, mayor and counsel. Because you were here during the day. You were making the contacts or...
Part time.
Just a clear second. Is there, is there a second on that? Doesn't, okay. All right, now, so that's not passed. Is there a motion to adjourn? Did someone make that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been made, but it's not seconded.
Okay, so that's, so that's where we are.
Charlie, he's hired.
No.
We've been stalling too long. Stalling and dragging, stalling and dragging. When the man interviewed, he was ready.
We have to make sure we cover all of our bases to make sure. We all have a, we all want someone to be in position to do what's needed for the city of Lake City. But we have to make sure that all of our bases are covered.
Our bases are covered.
You're not here every day.
Neither are you.
All right, counsel, let me remind you. We're in a public forum right now.
Yes, we are.
That's right, that's right.
There's a motion on the table to adjourn. Either another motion is made, a second is made, and a vote passes or fails. But that's what's before you. and a vote passes or fails, but that's what's before you.
Okay, the motion did not get a second. Now I'm asking for a motion to adjourn. We received a motion to adjourn. Come on, council.
Is there another motion on the floor? We've gotta do something.
Yes, we do. It is 9:30.
My motion. Authorizing the mayor or Brittany to make contact tomorrow morning with Mr. Stephen Thompson and have him hired tomorrow morning, April 9th, 2025.
Counsel, that's not on the agenda. Not improperly made, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
You said you could move a second, second session, right?
It was on the agenda, compensation and all the other stuff. What it says, compensation and, it wasn't specific, but...
After, oh gosh, we don't be careful.
Do y'all want me to give you the advice of...
Yes, no, please, please, please.
There is boilerplate language on the agenda that actually may be taken out of executive session. As your legal counsel, that is the favorable means and method, but it is not the most efficient prudent action of hiring or desiring to hire a city administrator.
So this wasn't done right, correct? As far as the legal advi, oh, excuse me, as far as with her making the motion?
Again, I hesitate to give legal advice in public forums, but there are best practices and there are not best practices. A line item is not on there for the retention and hiring of a city administrator. You have the boilerplate language. That's not always the best way to do it. We have that as good lawyers, but that is not arguably not notice to the world that you're about to hire a city administrator. You have it as a line item on an agenda. Again, is it possible, is it doable? Sure. But it's also possible that I drive 90 miles an hour home. But it ain't real smart.
Right. Think it through, think smart on this. Think smart on this. We're gonna get someone in, but we gotta do it right.
We need a motion to adjourn, so we can go.
We have to do it right.
Just like it was done before.
So once again, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, show of hands.